Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our committee meeting, Brunswick County Schools. We will be beginning in just a moment. I would like to make note that Mr. Miller cannot be here today due to his work schedule, so he will be in touch with myself and the superintendent in the next couple of days and will gather the information that is presented at this time. Okay? With that said, we'll go ahead and begin with our edlog presentation.
Good morning, board members. This is Sue. Derek Graham with edlog is with us this morning. What we asked them to do was help us with bus routing that is needed with the opening of the new Town Creek Middle School and the other district line adjustments that we've done in the northern part of the county. I know you've met Mr. Graham before, and so I'll just turn it over to him.
Right. Thank you very much, Sue. And yeah, I hope the audio works okay. I understand you have the presentation there. And I appreciate the opportunity for us to gather this way. It's certainly a different world. I don't have to tell anybody that. It's kind of interesting, since I retired from the State Department of Public Instruction about three years ago, I've been doing a lot of work with edlog. They're headquartered in Montana. And so this has been my normal for a while, lots of Zoom meetings and conference calls and that kind of thing. So it's interesting to watch that creep into the schools and everywhere else. But I won't take too much of your time with preliminaries, and we'll just kind of jump right in. So the first slide here, Brunswick County Transportation Analysis, is focusing on the implementation, from a transportation perspective, of those new boundaries. So go to the next slide. It's just a little bit of background. Brunswick County Schools did a contract with Crawford GIS and came up with, they recommended four potential school boundary configurations dealing with the opening of Town Creek Middle School. And so there were four different redistricting scenarios. And so you asked edlog to do a transportation analysis for each of those four scenarios so that in making your final decision on which of the redistricting scenarios you would have any distinguishing information from a transportation perspective. Certainly for individual neighborhoods or families, there may have been a difference in terms of transportation impact. But overall, in terms of system-wide mileage, the average student travel time, there was not a lot of difference from a transportation perspective. And so what I hope we allowed you to do was remove transportation from the picture and to concentrate on other factors that would affect your decision. So Board of Education selected the scenario that was affectionately called Scenario Number One. And so that's where we picked back up again. In doing the first analysis, we were going in on the assumption that Town Creek Middle and Town Creek Elementary would be transported together and would be on the same bell schedule as the high school. And in doing the analysis, it appeared to us that it would be worth looking at, if it was even potentially an option, it would be worth looking at a different kind of bell schedule for Town Creek Middle and Town Creek Elementary School, not necessarily transporting them together, not necessarily on the same tier as the high school. And so that's the analysis that we did. So on the next slide, I've just got some basic terminology that might be helpful as we go forward. It's nothing mysterious, but a bus run, in edlog terminology and in bus routing terminology, is basically where the bus goes out, picks up students, picks up more students, picks up more students, and drops them off at the school. So the bus is empty at the school, and that's the end of the run. Now, that bus may well go out and pick up more kids, maybe to another school, doing another run. So each one of those runs, some people may refer to it as a trip, is a single segment. All of those segments of bus runs make up a bus route. And essentially, you have the same number of bus routes as you have buses operating on any given day. A bus route is comprised of all the morning runs, all the afternoon runs, and makes up what the bus does for the day. So when I say bus route and number of school buses, that's basically the same thing. Deadhead travel is, if any of you have had any experience with the trucking industry or anything like that, it's a transportation term, but basically, it's when a vehicle's traveling empty from one place to another. So in our terms, deadhead travel is going from the end of one run to the beginning of another. So if you imagine, for instance, that every school started at 8:00, and every bus just did one trip to school, there would be no deadhead travel because once they get to school, then they're done. They may go back to park, but they're not going to another run. So our deadhead travel occurs when we have a bus doing more than one run in the morning or more than one run in the afternoon. So, any questions about the terminology? All right. So our task on the next slide basically is to present some options for consideration from an efficiency perspective and from a funding perspective. We certainly know that you have many more perspectives to consider.
Hang on, Derek.
And recommendations, we're providing data. So that, just like the project of the district board, that you can have some data on estimation decisions. So the data that are presented in this study are district-wide changes in buses and costs.
Derek.
Yes?
Hang on a second. We're having an audio issue. I just want to be sure everybody's got their phones muted. And, okay, let's try to pick back up. Go ahead, Derek. Go ahead, Derek.
Okay. All right. Pick it back up. Thank you. All right. So in this slide, which says our task is basically that we're providing options for your consideration. And we're looking at it from a funding perspective and from an efficiency perspective, recognizing that those are not the only perspectives, maybe even not the most important perspectives, so that you can have that data. So the data that we're presenting here in the coming slides are changes due to the opening of the new Town Creek School, the redistricting that was done, and their impact district-wide. Right? So obviously, there are some causes of the district that are not impacted. And we'll focus on the changes in buses and costs and funding that you may want to consider. So the next slide, we have three scenarios that we evaluated. So what we called Scenario One was to separate the Town Creek Elementary and Town Creek Middle School transportation.
Hang on a second, Derek. This is Sue, board members. I want to be sure nobody's got their phone on speakerphone. That may be causing a little bit of feedback.
Or if they do, just have them muted.
Or if you do have your phone on speakerphone, well, I know you've already muted them, so... All right, let's pick back up.
Somebody's not muted.
All right.
Yeah, somebody, I'm getting some, somebody's not muted. All right.
I'm not muted.
You're not muted. Well, you talk.
That's just, just a little joke there.
All right. I'm not muted. Now, all right, I'm about to mute.
All right. Here we go. All right. So the three scenarios that we evaluated, and this was based on what we saw in the first study, that really merited some additional consideration. So Scenario One is to separate the two Town Creek schools, the elementary school and the middle school. And the middle school would start at about 7:30. The elementary would start at about 8:30. And that would allow buses to do a run for the middle school and then go back out, that same bus, go back out and do a run to the elementary school. And so you pick up some efficiencies there. You do end up running some additional deadhead for that bus to go back out and start another run. So that's the first scenario. The second two scenarios involve combining Town Creek Elementary and Town Creek Elementary students on the same bus. This is, you know, it's a natural thing from an efficiency perspective because they're on the same campus. Right? And so you do one load, you pick up grades K through eight, everybody that's out there. So in doing, in both that, Scenario Two, we put both of those together on Tier One, which is a 7:30 start. And in Scenario Three, we combined the two, had students from both schools on the same bus, put them on Tier Two, which is about an 8:30 start. So that's the, those are the three scenarios that we have. We'll keep referring to those three over and over again. Right? So on the next slide is just our base data for the study. And so in the study area, we have checkpoint mileage, which is going from the school or the bus garage, wherever the bus parks overnight, going out to the first run to get started and back to park in the afternoon. So there's checkpoint mileage, there's deadhead mileage between runs, as we talked about, and then, of course, the line share is loaded mileage. So 4386, 4,386 miles per day. The total there is about 6,000 miles per day. And then over in that third column, which is just kind of for reference, so on average, each run is about 19 miles, 19.41 miles. And the checkpoint miles going from where it parks, where the bus parks, to where it starts the run is about six miles. So you can see that about three-quarters of the mileage is with students onboard, loaded mileage. And then about a quarter of it is checkpoint mileage, deadhead mileage, where the bus just has to get from point A to point B so that it can continue on picking up kids. So that's just a framework. So now we're going to run, so now we're going to start talking about, really, what we're here to talk about, and that is additional cost, additional mileage for the different scenarios. And let me, I'm going to jump down to the light green bar at the bottom. Right? And this is a bit of a deal, a big deal. Because Scenario One, right, Scenario One, where we split the elementary and the middle, that can actually be done without adding any buses. So there's no additional buses there. Scenario Two, where the two Town Creek schools are combined and they're on the 7:30 start time, we would need to add on three buses. And in the Scenario Three, where the middle school and the elementary are on the later tier, the 8:30 start time, we would add on two buses. All right? So that's the zero and the three and the two in the light green. So all of these cells above have to do with additional mileage. And so we'll see that in Scenario One, total mileage is 6585 compared to the 6,000 we were looking at on the previous slide, 6430 for Scenario Two, 6423 for Scenario Three. So if we look at the deltas over there on the right side, the school bus colored columns. So because of adding on additional buses, there's a little bit more checkpoint mileage, that's three buses or two buses that have to park and get out in the morning. There's a little more deadhead mileage. In the first scenario, the 410 additional deadhead miles is more than the other two because that's where we're separating the Town Creek schools. And so you can have the buses that you didn't add have the opportunity to go back out and pick up another run. And then a little bit more loaded mileage with the buses or with those schools separated because essentially, you have to cover some of those same roads twice. Right? If you're going to separate, you've got to go out and get the elementary school kids, you have to go out and get the middle school kids, and you have to cover those roads twice. So that's why a little bit more loaded mileage, you actually run less miles when you combine the two. So that's the 81.3 compared to the negative 62. Right? So that's the additional mileage for each scenario. So the question then is, what impact does that have? What impact does 491 additional miles versus 336 additional miles versus 329 additional miles have when you also consider the number of buses that has to be added, either zero or three or two for these three scenarios? All right? So I'll pause right there if anybody needs any clarification on the three scenarios or the numbers that we're looking at. Okay. All right. We'll go to the next slide, and I need to give you just a little bit of background information. This is the Department of Public Instruction refund rate. And each school district gets one of these every year. So Mr. Taylor and his staff worked with this on a regular basis. Basically, what it's used for is if you run a, if you take a field trip in a yellow bus, an instructional field trip, and you take kids to, you know, to the coast or to a storm site or whatever, if you do that in a yellow bus, then you have to repay the state for the use of that yellow bus. And so this is the rate that is used to repay for the use of that yellow bus. And it is calculated by taking your total expenditures in each of these categories and dividing it by the number of miles that Brunswick County ran with school buses the previous year. And so you can see about 37 cents for transportation salaries, $1.8 per mile for driver's wages, 33 cents a mile for fuel. Bus replacement cost is something that goes back to the state. It won't be important for what we're doing here. But my point in showing you this is that these are the state-generated numbers that we can use in order to estimate how much additional mileage that costs in Brunswick County. Right? And so this full rate is $2.94. You won't see me use that rate because it includes things like the bus replacement and tort claims, you know, the Department of Justice, and even transportation salaries, which are pretty much fixed. And so these are where we're taking the numbers from. The number that I'm going to use for the most part is $1.86 per mile, which includes drivers and oil, tires, tubes, parts, fuel, and then some of the benefits associated with, that the drivers receive. But I just wanted you to know where this comes from, and that we'll use that as our one basis. All right? So I don't know any really other way to do this than just go through line by line.
Derek.
Yes, ma'am.
Hang on. I'm on a, we're having a little bit of sound trouble again. I'm going to take a two-second break here and see if we can clear it up.
Okay.
Hang on.
So this table here that's labeled "time calculations." And this is one way of looking at the additional costs that you would incur for the different scenarios. Right? So I'm going to go through line by line. So lines one, two, three, and four are the, basically, the mileage that you saw earlier. That 609, 3.70, that was on that very first slide that I had. So that's kind of our baseline miles. Over on the left side, the time per day, lines one, two, three, and four, is the time translation. So on the right side, we have mileage. On the left side, we have time in minutes and in hours. And the, and just for, I calculated the miles per hour just for fun. And just as we expect, the average speed for deadhead mileage, where there's no students onboard, is a little bit faster, you know, almost 26 miles an hour rather than the 23 miles an hour for loaded miles, where you're having to make passenger stops and such. So that's not a particularly important column. Just threw that on there for free, as my high school history teacher used to say. So anyway, that's our baseline. So let's move down inside this orange box. And this is the, these are the three scenarios, and then you'll see the changes that result. All right? So Scenario One, loaded miles, 11,641; deadhead miles, 1507; combined miles, 13,158. So the, I'm sorry, that's in minutes. Okay? That's the minutes we're looking at. All right? Scenario Two, 12,766 minutes; and Scenario Three, 12,735 minutes. We're comparing those to line four above, where it says 12,336 minutes. Right? So each of those scenarios, and you see over towards the right in the school bus colored columns, the changes for Scenario One, 812 more minutes; Scenario Two, 429 more minutes; and Scenario Three, 399 more minutes. So what we have to do is to translate those minutes into hours and then calculate the number of hours per year based on 172-day school year. All right? Everybody remember back when we used to go to school with 172 days?
Yep.
So that's line nine. That's the number of hours based on the 172-day school year. And we're sort of those changes. Right? And so remember that Scenarios Two and Three, which have much lower hours, are the ones where you have to add on buses, two or three buses. All right? So now I'm going to work down, let me just explain line number 10. So from one of the state reports that you guys submitted, there was an average bus driver's salary or average wage rate of $15.90. Based on the other reports from DPI, we're estimating 36% as a benefits cost and social security and retirement and all that kind of thing. So multiplying out, we see an hourly wage rate for bus drivers of $21.62, including benefits, which is, you know, so that's your actual cost for adding on an hour of driver time. So multiplying that down, the total, line number 11, the total driver labor cost for the three scenarios, the first one, $50,334.91; Scenario Two, $26,593.20; and Scenario Three, $24,733.53. Now, it's not just about labor cost, it is also about mileage. All right? So you see the number of miles, the annual increase in the number of miles for each of those scenarios, 84,000, 57,000, and 56,000. And so we do have to figure in the cost of fuel and parts and tires. Those things are directly related to mileage. And so line number 13 is the cost for that, for fuel, parts, and tires, based on the mileage above, so 47,000, 32,000, 31,000. So we add together lines number 11 and 13, and that's what gets us to the total increase in cost using the hourly labor rate, 97,656.92, or 59,026.55, or 56,495.05. I know there's a lot of numbers on that screen, so, but I wanted to make sure you see how we can take the differences in the scenarios and expand that into what your additional costs would be. Yeah, and this is not the punchline yet. This is just one calculation of those times and mileages. All right? All right. I'm going to move to the next slide and bring back in that refund rate. Right? So again, we're going Scenario One, Two, and Three, same definitions. And we're going to focus on this slide, we're focusing on mileage, right, just mileage and that refund rate that I talked about earlier, the $1.86 per mile. So line one...
Derek.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's take another two-second break and let this sunstorm or whatever's going on pass. Ready?
All right. All right. So remember that Scenario One is the one that does not require additional buses. Scenario Two requires three additional buses, and Scenario Three requires two additional buses. So again, we see the same numbers from before, the change in daily mileage, the change in annual mileage. And if we multiply that change in annual mileage by $1.86 per mile, then you see the cost there, 157,000, 107,000, or 105,000 for those three scenarios. All right? So when you change, when you increase or decrease costs, and when you increase or decrease the number of buses operated, that impacts your budget rating from the state. Right? Your current budget rating is 85.31%. And these changes, by increasing mileage, still transporting the same number of students, until you're able to go in and analyze other efficiencies, actually reduces your budget rating. And so the budget rating reflects the percentage of state money that you get for your total expenses. So you see the budget rating that's reflected across there for each of the three scenarios. The total in line number six, the total increased expenditures, is 6.1 billion, depending on which scenario you're talking about. So, in, in rough numbers, your current state funding is about 5.2 million, 5,225, 5.20. And so, you see that there is a decrease in state funding in, in each of these. Alright? So, there is, uh, so if you take, um, line seven and you subtract it from line eight, then you end up with that decrease in state funding. Alright? So, let's look at scenario one. Right? You were getting, uh, 5, 5,225, and now with this scenario, you would be getting 5,200,000. And so, the decrease there is 24,000 in state funds. And so, that, we did that for each of the three scenarios. The, the, uh, but the other part is, up in line four, remember, you had to add in additional funds, presumably from local funds. You had to, you had to add in additional funds for the additional mileage that are being added on as a result of the new, uh, of the new boundary configuration and the new school. It's only not unusual to add on additional mileage, additional expense when you're, when you're, uh, through a new school. And so, line number 10 is, uh, is basically the sum of lines four and nine, and so, uh, those that are highlighted in the, in the light green. So, we have a net fiscal impact, which is the, the cost that you put in upfront, uh, plus the, the decrease that you would see in state funding. So, it's really kind of the net cost to the district. Uh, 181, 991 in scenario one, 215, 841 in scenario two, and 197, 178 in scenario three. Now, that also includes the, um, that also considers that in scenario two and scenario three, you're able to come up with two or three buses to add on. Now, it's my understanding that, that through efficiencies in the past, you have some buses sitting aside that could be added on at no cost. It's not like you have to go out and buy three buses at a hundred thousand dollars apiece. So, so you have that kind of in the bank, so to speak. Alright? So, on the next slide, I'm gonna do the same funding impact, but I'm gonna use those calculations that we did previously based on, uh, the driver time. Alright? So, I'm, basically, I'm just pulling forward the, uh, the numbers that we, uh, that we used for, for, uh, driver time. So, we have, uh, total increased expenditures, uh, 97,000, uh, the associated budget rating, the increased expenditures, and how much the state funding would be based on all of that. Derrick, so, so my point here, and there's a, there's the associated, uh, decrease in state funding, with, without dragging you through every, every number on the page, uh, if we can focus on lines eight and nine, because we're getting down to the punchline, I promise. Alright? So, line eight is the way that we calculate the additional miles, uh, and the additional time, when we focus on the driver's salary, focus the, most heavily on the driver's salary and how many, uh, how many additional, uh, hours it's gonna take. And so, that's the 155, 189, 171. Uh, that is the, uh, so that's the lower of these numbers. Right? Line number nine is when we use the refund rate calculations, and that's the dollar eighty-six cents a mile without, without breaking it down, which is also a valid way to look at it, but it, it's, it's a little more conservative, and it results in higher cost numbers, 181, 215, and 197. So, lines eight and nine representing the same impact, just calculated a different way. Um, so I wanted you to, I wanted you to see, uh, there's a, there's a couple of ways to approach it, and so you don't know the, you don't know the final answer until the buses get on the road, but, but there, these are a couple of really, uh, really solid estimates. So, the average of those two lines, line eight and nine, is shown there. I've put these on the next slide on a bar chart, to, it's, I find it easier for me to see, anyway. So, the, uh, so scenario one there, Town Creek Middle at 7:30, Town Creek Elementary at 8:30. Scenario two in the middle has, uh, Town Creek Elementary and Town Creek Middle both starting at 7:30. And then the last one is Town Creek Elementary, Town Creek Middle, both starting at 8:30. And, uh, you see the two different, uh, the two different calculations, and I think that, I, you know, my recommendation to you is just to focus on the average of those two. Uh, it's, it, it's not gonna be down to the penny. Uh, and let me just say, and I should've made a separate slide on this, I guess, one of the, one of the things that, uh, that we're planning to do is to, uh, is to send this data, once, once you focus in on a particular scenario, we will send this data back to your transportation department and let them pick it up, uh, so that between now and the time that school starts, when you have, you know, parents, uh, request transportation, when you have students move in, all of that, they can actually do the fine tuning of these routes, and, uh, I, I would say with their local knowledge, probably, uh, you know, can probably reduce the additional cost, um, if they're, uh, you know, if, if things go like I would expect them to. But back to, but back to this, so the, so the estimates of the different, three different scenarios, if I can just summarize, uh, so Town Creek Middle at 7:30 and Town Creek Elementary at 8:30, uh, is the, uh, is the lowest cost, uh, but it has those, uh, it has those students separated. Alright? So, it has middle school in one set of buses, the elementary school in another set of buses. The middle one, oh, the, the last two have, uh, all the Town Creek students on the same bus, so you're not covering the same road twice. Uh, but, it does have elementary school and middle school kids on the same bus, and, and some boards of education are not crazy about that kind of thing, uh, given, you know, given options for behavior reasons and that sort of thing. Uh, and, and this has them on the first tier, uh, at 7:30. Right? That's the, uh, that's actually the most expensive, uh, in terms of cost. And then, the third scenario, and that's where you add on three buses. The third one, uh, Town Creek Elementary and Middle routed on the same buses, but not starting till 8:30, um, that cost is, is kind of in the middle of the other two, you have to add on two buses. But you do have the situation where, um, you know, you have middle school starting later than most of your other middle schools, and, you know, sometimes that's, uh, sometimes that's a problem. So, um, those are your, those are your three scenarios. My, my final slide is just a, uh, another title slide, so I'll just leave this one hang there, um, while we see if there's any, any clarifications you would like for me to, uh, to touch on.
Board members, do you have any questions? I know that's a lot of data. Um, the, the, as Derrick said, the reason we went through so much of that data in detail is to, um, is to, to show that this was thoroughly looked at. Um, a, and for me, uh, my intuition told me that the, uh, that the, that the least cost impact would be that, um, you, you, you're using the same buses and you're not covering routes two times, uh, but that's, that's not what, uh, that's not what, uh, the way it came out. So, um, I know this was a lot of data, but...
Sue, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One thing that I did, that I did want to mention, is I'm, is I'm looking at this slide, alright? So, you know, in round numbers, 170,000, or 200,000, or 180,000. So, the difference, the difference between these, uh, the difference between these is something on the order of, of, uh, $30,000, right?
Yep.
So, $30,000, looking at a $6 million transportation budget, is, you know, it's maybe a half a percent.
Yeah.
So, it, it's, while these numbers, you know, if I'm looking at these numbers in a household budget, it makes a, it makes a big difference. Uh, but, I, I think that what this says to me is that the cost, you know, the ultimate cost is, uh, in, in, in terms of the magnitude, they're, they're similar, you know, the transportation budget. And so, you know, if, if I'm a board member, um, I'm gonna, I'm certainly gonna weigh these numbers, um, but it's not the only thing to consider, I don't have to tell you that, but, um, uh, but they are, it's not like they're orders of magnitude different from one scenario to the other.
Thank you. Um, the, the, if you, if you look at the options, um, option number one, where we're going to school at two different times, uh, the pros there, if you look at the pros and cons, the pros are, is consistent with other schools, uh, there's not a, a traffic, uh, negative traffic impact, because the, uh, elementary school will be in before the, uh, middle school starts. The cons are, uh, parents who drop off their kids.
I'm not hearing questions.
I, I, Derrick, I muted that phone. I'm talking, but I muted the phone so I could cut out some of the feedback.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Hang on. Uh, the parents who, who are dropping off the kids are either gonna have to make two trips or wait somewhere on the property. Um, the, the, uh, with the other two scenarios, it, it is, is, is putting, uh, middle school and elementary on the bus, but we, we do that at Waukamaw. Um, the, it, it, uh, it, it is a little bit of a traffic concern, um, that's, um, depending on the, the number of families who, who, who choose to drop their kids off instead of using the bus service. Uh, with number three, um, that is going to affect middle school athletics because of the release time. Um, and, and again, you have a traffic impact. So, um, what, what we are, uh, asking you to do today is select one of these options, or, um, if, if, well, we'd like for you to select an option today so that we can begin with the, uh, routing of each student, um, and, and get that information out to the parents.
This is Mrs. Catherine, can I make a comment or question, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. In the considerations for the scenario two and three, I didn't, you know, have so many figures, is the cost of upkeep of the buses calculated somewhere in there? And I know that he kind of meant, answered the question that we already have two or three extra buses available if we, in stock, or whatever if we have. So, that was already answered in the question previously, but is that, are those costs and everything figured up and all that?
Derrick, would you answer that one, please? I think I know the answer, but...
So, right, in terms of the, uh, in terms of the, both calculations, actually, we use mileage. Uh, and so, the mileage is going to be, uh, you know, is gonna be increased regardless of the scenario. We did use the same, uh, mileage and upkeep rate, uh, for all the buses, whether it was one of the buses that was added back on, or whether it's, you know, your existing fleet. And so, the total number, the total number of miles, um, you know, has to be, has to be accomplished. So, the short answer is, uh, we use the, we use your, your labor force, your mechanic labor force, transportation staff as a fixed cost. We didn't add on any additional, uh, cost for that, except for what is reflected in the, uh, in the refund rate. Uh, but we did account for the parts and the tires and the fuel for, uh, for all of those miles, whether it's on a new bus or an existing bus.
Okay, thank you. And I guess just, you had mentioned, and one of the concerns that some of the parents had had, was putting elementary and middle school students on the same buses. And just from your, um, research and everything, Derrick, what is, are most counties veering away from that, or is that kind of a common, what kind of percentage of, of districts are doing that to your knowledge?
Yeah, you know what? It is, um, gosh, I, I, I don't know that I have a, a wide range of, of examples. Uh, I have worked with, uh, a district recently where, uh, they were having some problems with elementary school and middle school kids, uh, discipline problems, and, uh, and they wanted us to help them, help them look at separating those. But, uh, basically, the whole district had been, you know, buses had built over, had been built over time, assuming that elementary and middle were gonna be transported together, those, those buses were on the same campus or very nearby. And so, it was, it was so expensive to separate them in that case, that, that I don't think they're going to. Um, on the, uh, you know, on the flip side, there's, you know, the, the schools, a couple of the schools closest to my house here in Wake County, uh, Diller Drive Middle School and Diller Drive Elementary School are the same kind of thing as what you have there, on the same campus, but they are, uh, I'm almost certain are transported separately. But there's a lot of density here in, in Wake County, right? So, they can go fill up a bus full of just elementary or just middle school kids, um, a lot easier than in a, in a really rural place. Of course, your density, you know, helps support that in, in many parts of Brunswick County. But, um, uh, there's just not, there's just not a single, a single answer. There are, there are definitely considerations, having those kids on the same bus, and, and when that happens, you know, there, it becomes, it becomes important that the, that school principals are, are on top of it, that the bus drivers are supported, that they enforce having, uh, having seating charts, and so that you put the elementary kids up front and the middle school kids not sitting amongst them, and that, that sort of thing. So, there's a lot of things that go in there, there's certainly not a, uh, you know, there's certainly not a single hard and fast answer.
Okay, thank you. And that, and I don't know if there's any way we would ever, I mean, we probably could tell if some siblings, or how many sibling sets would be some in elementary and some in the middle, um, that, that depends on the route, I guess, but, um, anyway. I just know that's been a, that's just been a conversation with parents and everything, so, thank you.
I'm kind of, it's Jerry Ben. I'm kind of in favor of that number one, where we just keep them separate if it's cheaper. The only concern I would have is the sports, but I'm sure Jerry can work something out. Uh, considering redistricting, a lot of parents brought up the concern about the, uh, kids being on the same bus like Waukamaw, and since it just happens to be the cheaper route anyway, I just, I don't see why, throw the, make a, uh, big deal out of it and go with all the other options.
Mr. Benton, um, this would not have any effect on the sports, because that, this is consistent with other middle school, uh, release times.
Okay, so, so number one would be find your sports for the middle school?
It would.
Okay, well then... As I understand it, that the, the, uh, the one that would cause you the most difficulty with sports would be, um...
Three.
With them routed together, starting at 8:30, that's scenario three.
Yeah.
Right? So, you would have schoolers starting later and getting out later than other middle schools.
Yes.
So, the only downside for one that we understand is that parents who have children in both schools would have to wait between schools, between the two bell times to pick up their kids. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, or, you know, or they, if they, well, if that, it's, you know, our, our bus service is really safe and well-managed, and, um, so I would, you know, we, we're, so we're good, our kids are good on the bus.
Ms. Rutledge?
Yes, ma'am.
This is, this is Ellen. Um, in response to Mr. Benton's question about the parents waiting, do parents not do that at this time? Say they have a child at Lincoln Elementary and a child at Leah Middle, there's time between that, is that not correct?
Um, yeah, I mean, yes, ma'am.
The different start times, I mean, so there's gonna be a downtime whether the parents are driving or sitting if they drop their children off, is that correct?
Y- yes. I mean, yeah, so, yes.
Okay, so that, mhm, so that in and of itself is gonna be time, uh... Okay, so that, mhm, so that in and of itself is gonna be time, time that the parents will either be driving or waiting, I guess that's what I'm saying. So there's gonna be time in between both starting points at any rate.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so with that, my, my question to you now with that, what would be the best scenario based on students and cost effectiveness?
You're asking me, Ms. Milligan?
You and Derek, mhm.
Well, because number one is consistent with, except for Waukamaw, which is, you know, just way removed from everything else, but it, because it stays consistent with the rest of our elementary and middle schools, because it does not affect middle school athletics, and because it is the lowest cost option, even though, even though percentage-wise, you know, there, there's not a huge difference, but we spend a lot of time around this table hunting thirty and forty, fifty thousand dollars, so...
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Yeah, so, I, I, I think number one.
Okay. With that said, are you asking us for a formal vote on the scenario today, or just a choice of option at this time?
Um, we would like to go ahead and get started routing, I'm, I'm, if you, if you all are comfortable and you have enough information, that's what, that's what we would like to do, but I, that's, I mean, if you guys need to think about it, then we'll make do. We, of course, will get the routes done.
Ms. Milligan, this is Ed.
Yes.
With all that's been said, I'm gonna go ahead and make, make a motion that we accept scenario one for route, for routing purposes for Town Creek Elementary and Town Creek Middle.
Okay.
I'll second, Mr. Benton will second.
And Mr. Benton is seconded, or is there any discussion further at this point? If not, all in favor of accepting scenario number one for Town Creek routing purposes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have, the motion is carried and with no opposition.
Thank you, board members, thank you, Derek.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rutledge.
Derek, I'm signing off, thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, this is Freya Cahill, we're beginning the, the budget part of the agenda. There's a lot of information in today's meeting, and we hope that having provided these documents in advance for board members has been beneficial. Ms. Rutledge and myself will be tag teaming both the capital outlay portion and the bond.
So Ms. Cahill, while I'm hearing you say is the, this budget information is, is simply for information today?
The capital outlay budget is for information, and if there, if board members wish to make any changes, it'd be very helpful to have those today so that next month we can give you a final.
Okay.
With the bond portion, it would also be helpful if there are any changes to the projects, we kind of need to know that as soon as possible, so informational, but yet feedback if there are concerns.
Okay, thank you very much.
So with the proposed cap, capital outlay budget, just to remind board members of the process, the operations team met with each of the principals to go over the capital needs of their school, and this document represents the compiled recommended projects. I'm gonna go over the summary page, where we are requesting in total five point eight or five point nine million as a, as a total budget. This is eight hundred thousand more than what we spent last year, but the funding is available at the county for this. We relied on feedback not only from the schools on what they needed, but also the operations department, you know, they're out in the schools and they know kind of what the, what the needs are to keep the buildings up. The first category is building and site improvements, that total is two point seven million. Furniture and equipment is right at a million, transportation, one hundred and forty-one thousand, technology, one point nine million, and this is to support replacements and failures. And then something new this year is to start a set aside pot for re, not replacing, but resurfacing, I guess, the astroturf, which I think is on a twelve-year cycle, ten, eleven?
Uh, this is ten, but it'll go longer than that.
Okay, so this is year one of that, so we're just gonna start a setting aside fund so that in ten or eleven years when we need to resurface those fields, we will have the money set aside. So that's the summary, and now Ms. Rutledge will go into some of the highlights of the details.
Board members, we meet with every principal, and principals have a list of things that they need to see at their schools. We also have a list based on maintenance evaluations, and we go, we, we get, we just kind of sit around and talk about and prioritize what's, what's the most important to do in the coming year. So on page two of seven, that's, that's where that principal operations list starts. And I'm not gonna read through all of those, if, I'll just see if you guys have questions, because I know you've had this material. If you get to page five of seven, that's where the, the requests are, that starts the, the, a list of the requests that we had, that we did not have funding to do and would have to be deferred to the next year.
Ms. Rutledge, well, we're still, I don't have any questions without two through five, but I do have a question on six.
Okay.
It's under requested items, page six of seven, line eighty-seven.
Okay.
Replace bus camera units with wireless stop-arm systems. Explain that, please.
Um, some, we have different, we got different ages of camera systems on our buses, and...
You're talking back.
Now I lost you, Ms. Milligan, the sound kind of went away for a second.
Okay. I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
I can't, go ahead.
Okay, I was referring, I'm gonna ask, are you referring to the cameras that are inside the buses now that focus on the inside of the bus?
No, this camera records stop-arm violations.
Okay.
And we have, we've got old systems that we, we have to go out to the bus, I, I think I'm right about this, if I'm wrong about this, I'm, I'm gonna call you and straighten it out, but we have, we have some, some systems, we have to go out to the bus, take out a hard drive, and, and then go into the school and then play that. The newer systems, they, they run off of the Wi-Fi, so when the bus pulls into the school, we don't have to take out that hard drive, we can get, we can, we have wireless hotspots on, on the outside of the school in the bus parking lot, and we can get that stuff really easy and quick. When we take these hard drives out, sometimes if they don't get put back in there exactly right, then we think we're recording and we're not, so those things are real touchy, and, and we're just kind of trying to cycle those through. They work, but you just gotta be careful with them.
Mhm, so we will, let me make sure I'm getting this cat right in my mind, we will have, continue to have cameras inside the buses.
Correct.
Okay, and that's, okay, then I'm, that's my question, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry we're in all that detail.
No, that's mine, that's it.
Did you say that certain pages below the line?
Yes, sir.
What page, starting with what page?
Uh, these, these are different categories, the things on page six, those are, those are funded.
Yes, this is five.
Uh, so it's just page five, those about ten lines there.
Five, it says unfunded, okay.
Yes.
Okay, I got you, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so a little shout out to finance, we used to have a lot bigger list than that, so it feels good to catch up some, some things that have been out there for a long time.
Ms. Cahill?
Can, 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 I can't hear Ms. Milligan, can everybody else hear me?
I got you.
I can hear you, mhm, I can hear you.
Now I got you now, Ms. Milligan, go ahead.
Oh, okay. On page seven of seven, on line eighty-nine, what type vehicles are these? Says replacement vehicle.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, yeah, but we, it's, it's just the cars that we have that are so old, it's costing more to maintain them than it is for us to keep driving them, and so fifty thousand dollars, that's probably, that's probably three, and, and I don't, I don't know yet that we've determined what they need to be replaced with.
Okay, but we are reducing the fleet over time.
Yeah, we, we are continuing to, to reduce the fleet too through attrition, so cars that, that people no longer drive home, or in, in some cases where we've changed the way we, we, we do things, those vehicles, we are, we're gonna make do with what we have, and, and whether it's the right vehicle or wrong vehicle until they're worn out.
Well, I definitely want you to have what you need, but you know my stance on...
Yes, ma'am.
On excessive vehicles.
I do.
Also, the same page, line ninety-three, under proposed technology replacements, I see replacements for infrastructure. Now what does this consist of? Is it like hardware, switches, those kinds of things, or...
Yes, ma'am, switches mostly.
Okay. Or, or, let me ask you at this point, are we considering going virtual at any time?
In what regard?
With regard to technology, where we would do away with so many of those switches and so forth.
I know we have a combination currently, that's a good question, let me follow up on that.
Okay, please do, I know there's pros and cons, but for the most part, virtual is where most organizations are going if they're not already there now, so just, you'll get back with me on that.
I will, Ms. Milligan.
Thank you. And also line ninety-four, replacement and failures, are, now when you say replacements, is this when they age out and we wanna keep them on the cycle?
Those are actually things that fail before they are replaced, replacement cycle. We're having some of our smart boards especially that are starting to age out or just break, and it's cheaper to go ahead and replace them as they fail, rather than waiting until they come up on the rotation.
Right, okay, now will, will the longevity of these, say, smart boards be taken into account? Will we be looking hopefully at the next set we put in place being lasting longer?
They have come a long way, they are lasting longer, and they are actually less expensive and more powerful, the new ones that we're getting.
That's wonderful, because I know for a while the projectors were so sensitive that, you know, that that was always a concern, so, thank you very much.
You're gonna see when we get into the bond, there's also a pot of money in the bond for technology, where our hope is to not put all of it in infrastructure, because last bond issue, we did put most of it in, in infrastructure, that this time we'll be able to really enhance the number of smart, smart boards for those schools that kind of put that on hold while we were getting geared up with Chromebooks, now we're hoping, and I'm using the wrong word, if Acacia's listening, she's probably, because I'm not supposed to use smart boards, it's called something else now, but those devices, that would push to get more of those in the schools that are lacking.
Okay, thank you so much. Questions or comments from anyone else regarding this? Okay, if no questions or comments regarding that, we can move on to bond issue two project review.
Okay, so just to finish up with, with what we just finished, next step for me would be next month, the next committee meeting, that we would bring the five-year CIP Capital Improvement Plan that board members are familiar with, that we work with the county on, that would reflect these total numbers of five point seven million to, to, and a budget, budget resolution to approve the, that budget for, to be effective July one, so that would come at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, so bond issue, bond issue two project review, just to recap, and as you recall, in 2016, the voters of Brunswick County did approve that hundred and fifty-two million dollar bond issue to improve our school facilities, and those bonds are sold in three phases, phase one for fifty-three million was made available to us two years ago in 2018, and last month, Mr. Eckert presented to the board an update on the completed projects, and also gave a report on those that are still in progress. Today we come to talk about bond issue two, which is, those bonds are due to be sold July of 2020, which is coming up, in the amount of forty-seven point five million. And so the topic today are those particular projects. And then we have bond issue three, which comes in two more years, in 2022. But back to bond issue two, in March of 2019, the board approved obtaining an advance on this, this bond issue of four million dollars, so that we could begin design work for the major construction projects. Much of that has been done today, and the intent for today, until a couple of weeks ago, when our worlds got turned upside down, was to ask for another advance so the site work could begin, and that would, would have allowed several of the projects to be completed before next school year. Ms. Rutledge is gonna go into more detail about that here in a minute. So let's go through the, this summary list, I'm gonna start really at the back page where you see forty-seven point five million, that's the amount of the bond issue, and the original estimate for each of the projects back in 2016, and then the next column shows the revised estimate with today. Obviously, a lot of things change in four years, but the, the amount of money going to each category has not changed, and that's why we show it to you in where wasn't and where is it. We're still doing all of the things that were promised to the voters in the bond referendum, but the monies are having to be moved around because of just cost differences, and a variety of other reasons, and we've got that in the notes, and Ms. Rutledge will probably go into more detail on that. Behind, what you got here in this shortened version is there are another twenty columns or so that had been hidden. that have been hidden, uh, which are finance-related and budget codes and things like that. But I know that, that, uh, we just wanted to share the big picture with you today, and, um, and thank you to Mr. Eckert for, uh, helping us to get to this point with, with this. All right, Ms. Rutledge.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, beginning on page one, um, we, we've got mechanical and electrical repairs, um, that we plan to do, and what, what is selected will be based on our evaluation, and, uh, if needed, some engineer evaluations. Although, with service records and the age of equipment, we're not going to have to spend much money on analysis or, or engineering fees for that portion of this. Um, we have some money set aside for bleachers. Uh, we have worked a lot on bleachers already because of safety issues, and we paid for that out of the capital outlay budget. So, um, that, um, that, we don't think we're going to need to spend that money, uh, at the middle schools and the high schools. Three hundred thousand dollars' worth of bleachers is, we don't feel that's needed any longer, because we've done so much work already. Um, as I go through these, if you guys have a question, just, just slow me up. The, uh, resurfacing of the tracks, uh, that was in the bond, um, in addition to that work that was planned, the hurricane, Hurricane Florence mostly, uh, that damaged our tracks. Uh, didn't do it immediately, uh, but, uh, groundwater, uh, and, and, uh, and, and water pressure, uh, it, it has damaged the track surface at, uh, South and West, uh, and, and that damage is, is, uh, it's not real bad, but it's going to have to be fixed. Uh, at North, um, we're going to have to dig up portions of the track and, and, uh, and compact the soil the way it should be, and put new asphalt down and new surface. Uh, we have some reimbursement from FEMA. Uh, we sought reimbursement for all three schools. We got reimbursement, uh, for North from FEMA, so that's going to help us out there. Uh, the wrestling practice area at West, um, we, uh, we've already done that work out of bond issue one. And, uh, so, so, uh, so, i- i- it's like Ms. Cahill said, there's a, i- i- it's the, it's the back page, and all this stuff balances out at the end. Um, so anyway, we've already done that, that, uh, that work at West. Football lighting, um, antenna sliding, we got a lot of that to do. Uh, locker room renovations at, uh, North Brunswick and Leland Middle, uh, we've already completed that,
At Leland.
At Leland, and we've, and, and, uh, we've done what we felt needed to be done at North. Uh, at West, um, the field house, um, that's, uh, that, that one is coming up in bond issue two. At Southport Elementary.
Hold on, with the West, um, the, the West, there's a, the, the sentence ends there. Original estimate was based on renovations of the current building.
Oh, sorry about that.
But, uh, we have some leftover funds in, uh, athletic dollars remaining in bond issue one that will go towards this, uh, and so the total project for the field house is actually going to be two point seven four million. Uh, and so the, the one point seven for bond issue two, and then the remainder will come from carryover or unexpended athletic money in, um, bond issue one. I think we covered that when, during the last meeting, when Mr. Eckert was giving you an update, uh, from bond issue one.
Yeah, thank you for that. And, and, and that, that, part of that is, uh, we, uh, we thought about renovating the existing field house. Um, there's a, there's kind of a, I guess, a long story behind that building there, but there are no plans, uh, and we, we have gotten the county to, uh, to, to see if we, if we're able to get permitting to, to work on that building, but, uh, we're, we're just, because of numerous, uh, code requirements, that, that's going to make doing that just financially not the way to go, so that's why we're having, getting a new field house there. New windows at, uh, at, uh, Southport. Science, uh, science class re- uh, work at the middle schools and the high schools. Um, so, uh, our science rooms, um, they're, they're large enough, they have, uh, they have the right equipment in them, uh, but we're going to be working with the science departments in, in, in the middle school and the high school. Um, we know we need, uh, chemical hood at West. Um, we, um, we know we need some, uh, some science, uh, classroom furniture and equipment. When we, uh, looked at this originally in the bond, um, the consideration was adding science classrooms, uh, on, uh, but we have added, uh, classroom space in the two additions at West and North. And so, we, we really don't need square footage, uh, but the science rooms and the science programs need to be outfitted better, and so that's what the focus will be there. Tennis courts, uh, at West.
Ms. Rutledge?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Ellen. How many, uh, tennis courts does this encompass?
Uh, it'll be the four existing and two new ones. Uh, we have to have six courts to be able to hold, and lighting, to hold matches at the school. So, that's what we have at South. They're moving to West, and then it'll be North. But North is not in, North is in phase three, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the, uh, there's, uh, uh, there's, um, uh, county pieces, uh, a little bit, kind of a canopy down at the bus garage, so that we can do tire work outside and not take up a repair bay, uh, for tire work. Uh, and then it's canopies, uh, at the schools, um, which, you know, is needed, and we're, we're getting to them as we have money to do it. So, that's Shalope Middle, Southport. Uh, Southport's a repair. Uh, Leland Middle is an addition, and Supply is an addition, or an extension of what's there. Um, Bolivia, uh, was some, uh,
Ms. Rutledge?
Yes.
Can I just ask, was, supply was also on the other sheet for capital outlay, was it not? For some kind of busted canopy there?
What page, Mr. Benton?
Uh, I'm going to pull it back up. I was looking at this one here. I just thought I saw him on the other sheet as well. It might have been under the requested and not fulfilled, because it was already in the bond.
Uh, I'll check on that.
Okay, if you could.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on unfunded.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Uh, then we've got some, uh, you know, there's a list of roofwork there. All this roofwork, uh, is pro- is, uh, we've had an engineer look at that and prioritize this for us. And the, uh, and, and the roof maintenance program that we have in effect, the roofing engineering company that we're using, um, that's working well. Parking and drainage improvements, uh, this, I'm on page three now. Um, parking and drainage improvements, um, district-wide. Some of this was in the athletics. This, some of this money was in athletics purpose code, uh, but that athletic drainage, uh, which, uh, was at South or is at South, eh, well, some of it was, and some of it's just been done, that's been done out of the capital outlay.
So, now we can put it to district-wide.
Uh, so, yes, as Frank said, so now we're, we're moving that money and using this on, on, on parking and drainage, or pavement and drainage, district-wide. And you guys, y- you see the condition of our parking lots. We have a lot of work to do there. The We- West Brunswick, a turning lane on one thirty, uh, DOT, uh, you know, we, we had an, we had an engineering firm look at, uh, anywhere where we were doing, uh, additions to schools. Uh, and the engineering fees, we had to pay them upfront, and then DOT reimbursed us. Um, and so, um, the, 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 the deal now is, uh, DOT will reimburse us for roadwork, uh, if we do what, uh, they recommend that we do. So, that's why we're doing this. And they did not recommend, uh, an additional, uh, turning lane on one thirty. So, not, I, I, this information doesn't have anything to do with the bond two project, but, uh, putting two traffic signals, uh, on seventeen at one thirty, um, that is on DOT's, uh, project list. Uh, we do not have a date when that project will be done. But, um, th- they know that, uh, school system, uh, we want that, um, and, but all we can do is, you know, send a letter that says, "This is real important to us," which we've done. The North Brunswick, adding a turning lane on, uh, Old Fayetteville Road, that, that is, that, that is, that was an engineering recommendation, that is in our project, and so, uh, eventually, we will get reimbursed for that portion of the project. Moving on to line forty-seven, replacing some windows at Walkamon Union, um, the, keep moving on, fire and security system improvements at various schools. That, uh, that was, uh, all that money was in, uh, one or two high schools. And we've worked on those firearm systems, they don't need to be replaced. Um, and we're, we're using that money at all schools. Uh, Cedar Grove Music Room. Getting some feedback again, I'm sorry. Hang on. The music room at Cedar Grove, um, the original plan was to, uh, put up a really small addition on to the building, um, and, uh, we have, we, we think we have a better option, and that is, there's a, there's a teacher's office in there, uh, and a storage room adjacent to the music room. Storing musical instruments in small rooms has proven to be a problem anyway, uh, because of, uh, not, not being able to, uh, kind of, a lot of small rooms, it's a little bit harder to control the, the temperature and humidity, uh, in, in small spaces where you're closing doors. So, uh, the, our plan there is to remove that office and, uh, storage room, use, uh, really nice, uh, instrument, instrument storage racks on the outside walls of the rooms. Treat the, uh, treat the room with the proper acoustics, uh, and, and the music room will be the proper size, uh, that the music room should be. I, I don't know why that room is so small, uh, but, uh, this will make a really nice music room, and, uh, be a lot better option than, than, you know, scamping something on the outside of that school. Um,
Ms. Rutledge?
Yes.
Uh, this is Catherine. I just had a que- I just, I hope Town Creek Middle's, uh, music room is big enough, as we're starting off with it, just a comment.
Yeah, we-
So, we don't have to go back and do this. I don't know why this one was, you know, it was outdated very quickly.
Yes, ma'am, you're right. We looked at that real, real good, uh, and Craig asked a lot of questions about it.
Okay.
Um, let's see, the CTE, um, okay, CTE, so, we have, we have consolidated pro- programs to the coast. And, uh, that, uh, that was not in the, uh, original, uh, bond plan, but we, we had CTE allocations for each school. Uh, we've worked with Mr. Cheers, uh, and Dr. Oates and Mr. Tubbs, when he was here, to, uh, to, uh, move some of that money between schools, get the, uh, get the, uh, equipment and the space that we needed at the coast, uh, and then we, uh, we, we have added, uh, squi- you know, we're building a classroom building at West, and, and we have built a classroom building at North, and are building another classroom building. So, uh, there is, some of that space at North is already CTE space. Some of the space at West will be CTE classrooms, uh, and at South, um, we're, we're going to, uh, we're going to use, um, s- some money there to design a drafting, uh, some drafting, a drafting classroom, uh, a, uh, a project, uh, and construction room, um, and then there's, there's, uh, there's equipment. And so, the rest of that money is going to the coast, uh, where we're building an automotive, uh, building, and, and, uh, and equipment, and, and additional, you know, a little bit of additional circulation space, um, to, to outfit the, uh, the CTE center at the coast.
Sue, I had a question about this.
Yes.
So, the, the CTE money, like, for instance, the million at North, that is only going to outfit the classroom. Construction itself of the building was supposed to be included in the bond as a classroom extension, so that money for CTE money is only being used to put the fancy CTE cabinets in they need and all that, right? We're not actually building the classroom with the CTE money, right?
So, uh, when we get to the North project, uh, so line, um, fifty-seven, a million of the CTE dollars was put into the North addition, um, to support the CTE portion of that, um, project, construction project.
But my question is, if we were supposed to add on six classrooms, we had the money to add on six classrooms. Why didn't we add the six classrooms, and why are we taking then the CTE money, moving it over? I mean, I would totally understand if we built the six classrooms, and Daryl needs nursing beds set up in one of the rooms to use CTE money to furnish the rooms, but the building money for the six classrooms should have already been allotted, so I'm not understanding why we're pulling CTE money to actually do construction, because that money was supposed to be to get the program rolling.
So, if you look at line fifty-six, fifty-five, I'm sorry, fifty-six, seven, and eight, um, the initial cost of the classroom was five point two million, and it is now seven point one million. Um, be, in part because of the added square footage. Um, so as you, you know, in total, you know, the forty-seven point five million, first we went into all the construction projects. You've got to fund those first, and then you've got to start taking from somewhere, um, to make all those projects, uh, to make all this balance. Uh, but the thought was that there is this, there is a million dollars with the CTE, uh, enhancements in that project. Is, is that right, Sue? We may need to get Craig on the phone.
Yeah, hang on.
But absolutely, the seven point two million of CTE was absolutely, we had that by purpose code, and we made sure that, uh, those dollars, uh, went to either the West project, the coast, or the North project, or, and the million dollars set aside for South, because they don't have new construction. So, we're going, are you going to get Craig on?
Eh, I can, or I can, I can get you the detail, um,
We can, yeah, just get the details whenever we get to it. I mean, I'm just, I'm just concerned the CTE money's not going to CTE. We have a aviation program we're trying to get running, and we're taking money to start a program and using it to build, which was not the, uh, I, I believe the intent would have been to, to fund the capital costs of the project, not to build the classroom space, which was already in the bond, but, um, all right, I mean, that's fine. We can move on, it's-
Um, okay, Mr. Benton, I'll get you an answer. I, I'll need to talk with, uh, Um, okay, Mr. Benton, I'll get you an answer. I, I'll need to talk with, uh, Mr. Cheers and Craig. Um, where are we? Let's see.
59.
59. Um, okay, that, um, West, um, the difference in cost there is, some of that was, uh, a little bit of code requirement. We also had to install, uh, an elevator, which, uh, we didn't think we were going to have to do, uh, but we did. The, uh, we have a walkover, uh, at North, um, which, because of, of, uh, code, code, we were allowed to make that work, but it will, it would, it would not work at West and so we had to put in elevator, which was some additional cost. Uh, and, and, uh, yes, ma'am.
Um, Ms. Rutledge, I was just gonna ask where it says, um, classroom addition and we have square footage on the side note, but how mu, how many classrooms does 4,000 square feet equal out to?
Let me think.
This is line 59, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And we can come back to that.
Okay, I'm just making a note, Miss Milligan. I'm, yeah, I'll come back to that.
Okay.
Or I'll send it to you. And line.
We've seen the blue, I'm, I'm sorry, I think, we've seen the, I guess at some point there was a drawing of it in one of the prior meetings, if I'm not mistaken.
Mm-hmm.
But I can't remember either six, 10, 12, 30. Can't remember. Anyway. Oh, well, I'm, I'm no help. I'm, I'm gonna mute myself again.
Yeah, helps. And I'm not gonna guess, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get back to you. Uh.
Yes, that will be fine.
Okay. Uh, the, uh, the ROTC projects at all three schools, um, that is, uh, when that, when that says scope changes there, um, we had planned to, those are block, uh, concrete block buildings. Um, we had planned to just, uh, uh, take one, uh, put, put two wide doorways in and, and add on to the existing buildings. Um, but do, that's their, that's their, uh, shooting ranges and we're i- inside, uh, they can't do drill inside because the buildings aren't large enough. Um, but, uh, to be able to do competitions, um, the building had to be a certain size. Um, and so, uh, we, we tried to, uh, to find, uh, some, some savings on other projects and make those buildings for ROTC where they can have competitions and they can do, uh, inside drilling. And we were able to do that. Those are metal buildings, um, and like the, uh, like the me, metal building at the coast, anything that, that's visible from the street, uh, will have a, a nice facade on the front. Um, then our schools can hold competitions, uh, on our schools, uh, and we have some, we have some, uh, we have some really good ROTC programs. Uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful we're gonna be able to do that and that's gonna be a good, nice project. Um, the, uh, the building at, uh, Waukamau, um, we had a lot of, uh, a lot, we had several code requirements there that increased the cost that were unanticipated. Um, and, um, the, uh, the classroom size also, um, state, when the state mandated mandates for class size, that also had some effect on this project, which increased the cost. Um, going down to, uh, metal roofs, we had a lot of money in there for refinishing metal roofs, um, and that meant, uh, we were going to coat or repaint the, the whole roof. Our roofing engineer, uh, has told us that because of the age of our roofs, uh, that, that we might not have a successful outcome by doing that. Uh, and he recommended the roofs be cleaned, uh, and so that's why we have cost savings there. Um, and then landscape improvements at all the schools we've already completed. So the questions that, uh, I need to get answers back to you on are, uh, how many, uh, 4,000 square feet, how many classrooms, uh, is that? And, um, and Mr. Benton, um, if you, if you'll give me your question about CTE one more time, so I'll make sure I got it right.
I just wanted to be sure that we're using the CTE money for the program itself, not the building, because the building was supposed to be paid for out of the bond in a separate line item. So I, I feel like we're taking Mr. Cheers' money away for his new program. We're taking several million dollars away for something that should have been built that was already a line item, not bond. So I guess I'm, I just want to en- ensure that we used that money directly for CTE. If he needed a classroom's configuration change with walls added, I understand paying for that, but I'm, I'm still, I'm still concerned that we're using a million dollars of these building of his money for, you know, for that CTE programming, not for that, for putting the building up. And, uh, that's not the intention of my, my opinion here on that. But, um, so I guess that's my question is how did we use that million dollars?
Okay.
Was it actual building cost or was it upgraded, changed, or changes to the plans that cost extra money?
Well, I think that the, the money in here for, for CTE was for both. It was for additional space and it was for programs. So, uh, so, you know, by moving some of this to the coast, um, and, and this is where I'll need to get the detail, uh, by moving some of this to the coast, there may have, that, uh, that one, that certain program might have only been at this school. And then, uh, and then some of the stuff at the coast was at none of the schools. Uh, some of it was, we had a lower level, uh, program or a start, or kind of a, uh, um, uh, uh, let me get, Carpentry 101, uh, is at all three schools, but then, uh, once you get to Carpentry 303, well, that's at the coast now. So, uh, and, 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 and 303, uh, is a, is a lot, that's a, that's a more requires, uh, requires some additional space that is only at the coast. So it's kind of like a puzzle and I will get, I'll get Mr. Cheers, uh, and Craig to kind of show you where all those pieces went and how it fits.
Yes, ma'am. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, are there any other questions that I need to get back to y'all on? Okay, um, do, what we would like, uh, because we want to continue with design and continue with, uh, with, with bidding in, in some of these cases, uh, is to get approval to proceed with the program that's before you today.
Board members? Would you, are you requesting a bug today? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to go ahead and approve, to prove the, the bond project is presented.
Okay. Catherine has made the motion to approve this presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Lemon has made the, um, motion to second. Any discussion further? All in favor?
I would like, before we vote, I would like Mr. Benton's questions to be, uh, answered to his satisfaction. Um, I don't mind voting on this, but we might, if there's a real problem, bring it back to the table.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is we'll go ahead and, and vote with the caveat that if there is a concern after those questions are answered, that we will bring it back to the table again. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So there we have it passed with that caveat. Thank you.
Thank you, board members. Um, the next item is the consequences of a delayed early start. Uh, as Ms. Cahill said, our plan the day before, uh, things changed so drastically was to, uh, was to bring, uh, bids for early site work. Um, Ms. Cahill has been working with the county finance officer, uh, and both of them have, uh, have, the finance officer, and I, I, I let Ms. Cahill speak for herself, but that, they've been working with, uh, experts in the municipal bond market, um, regarding the strength of sales for our bonds. And there's confidence, uh, that the bonds will sell, uh, but we're hesitant to request an advance to begin work on some projects early. So, uh, if, if we get this advance and for some reason, uh, our, our bonds would not sell, then, then that 4.9 million dollars would have to be covered out of our, uh, reserves. Uh, in addition to that, uh, one of these projects, uh, involves, uh, the demolition of the classroom building at Waukamau. So, uh, so thinking about this money like it's our own money, uh, we're just not prepared to take that risk. Uh, there are some consequences for delay and I want to make you aware of those because, uh, taking the risk or not taking the risk is of course not my decision. Uh, so, um, the consequences of a delay for the school additions are by not doing site work early at North Brunswick, uh, West, Waukamau and the coast, the completion dates, uh, will likely push, be pushed back two months, uh, possibly longer, depending on contractor's ability to, uh, hold subs, hold pricing. Um, and, and there's a, there's a, a lot of issues there, uh, in the construction business that, uh, where you could have some possible, not, uh, pluses, maybe some minuses, but more than like, likely cost increase and, and time increases. Um, the, uh, an- another, uh, factor is by not doing site work early, uh, you're do, you, you're then, you're then doing site work when school is in.
Is.
So you're managing, at, at high schools especially, uh, a lot of traffic on a tight site. Um, and, and that, uh, you know, that's, that's gonna be disruption for, uh, the, 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 everybody at the school, the parents, the kids, uh, teachers, administration, and it's, um, it's going to slow the contractors', uh, progress and, um, will, will, it's a different set of conditions than they expected and they've already, um, um, gotten bids on. Um, so, uh, that being said, uh, well, there's one more, uh, the athletic, uh, by delaying the field house and stadium lighting, uh, lights and track repairs will not be complete most likely about a 2025 fall sports season. Uh, and, uh, uh, the track, the, the, uh, tracks will not be ready for spring sports in 2021. Uh, the West Field House work, uh, it can commence, but, um, it won't, you know, it's, it's gonna be delayed. Um, so, um, the bonds are expected to go to sale on July the 7th. Um, and, uh, what we would, would have asked you for today is approval of, of the, uh, uh, change order or contract. Uh, you know, when you have a construction manager at risk, it's called a change order, uh, as you, as you move through various phases of the contract with them. But what it is really is a contract. It would have been, uh, approval to proceed with early site work and, and we're saying we are, we're really not recommending that we do that now.
Sue, uh, Claudia, how much do we have in the capital fund, like in the, uh, sitting at the county?
Uh, there's approximately 5 million in the, uh, at the lower reserve and, uh, 3 million in, uh, sales tax. Um, yes, some of which we're obligating, uh, with the regular capital outlay portion, uh, and to fund the 5.7 million that we talked about earlier, I think we'll be dipping into that more, um, than we had initially two weeks ago thought we would. So, but, but still we've got enough to cover it. But remember, we're already, uh, have advanced ourselves 4 million, um, from, for the design work. So we're already, that's the risk we've already obligated ourselves to. So this would be obligating ourselves to another 5 million.
Okay. And how much of this is critical to actually getting the building, not the athletics, but just the buildings open for next year, to make sure that the building, like Waukamau specifically, will have a building next school year? What would the cost be on just the educational portion of the infrastructure?
Uh, I'll have to get you that, Mr. Benton, but I mean, it's, uh, it's a, it's a lot. Uh, the, the, uh, Waukamau, the, I mean, Waukamau wouldn't be ready until, uh, we won't be ready, you know, it won't be ready till the next school year anyway.
So there's, so what's actually critical for educational purposes in this that we would not make for next school year? You said Waukamau's already, we're planning on a year of loss there. So is there any other of these projects that are critical that we would have to start and we could just authorize just that project to make sure that we are ready to go next school year?
Um, we might be ready to go anyway. The reason we, we're, we're doing this site work early is because it's just safer. Uh, it's safer if you have a hurricane, uh, it's safe, you know, we were, we had a hurricane, I believe, uh, uh, sma, uh, not, not as bad as Florence when we did Town Creek Elementary. Uh, it might have been Florence, I can't remember, but we've, we've, we, we were able to get Town Creek Elementary done in time. Um, the, the, but if, if you have, if you have a, if you have any kind of weather delay, uh, or with what has, uh, with what's happened to the supply chain in the country, you may have delays there. And so, uh, it get, it, by doing this early, it gives you a cushion. We may still be able to get it done. Um, but I'm just making, making y'all aware that, uh, that it may not be possible without starting early. And so I don't know the exact amounts. I, I would say what's critical, West and North. Um, but, um, weighing critical and risk, you know, I, I don't know.
So Ms. Rutledge, um, on the, on the back page of this information that you've provided for us, it states that staff recommends the district not proceed early with Phase 2 work until the bonds have sold. So are you saying that we should not continue with this until July? That's when you said the bonds would be sold?
Um, yeah, I, I, I think that's what Ms. Ms. Cahill and I both, um, would recommend. And, um, so this is, the, 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 the money part of this is really not my call, but I, I, you know, I, I take my lead from Ms. Cahill. Um, the, and, and so, you know, my, my role here is to say, uh, these are, these are the. And so, you know, my role here is to say, these are the possible consequences. But the, with the, well, I'm not going to take a guess about money, but it's risky.
So the county does think that the bonds will sell. However, you know, every day changes. We know, you know, nothing, today is different from yesterday. And that is a big risk because, as I said, we've already got $4 million obligated. And if this is another five, that would wipe out our reserves that may be needed for, if things really go south and the ad valorem doesn't come in the way it's supposed to, and the sales tax especially is risky. You know, we know what's happening in the county. We know that the sales tax is not going to come in as what we thought two weeks ago. And, you know, just having, just spending money before you have it when there's such a big risk, it just doesn't seem, I can't advocate or recommend that the board proceed with so many unknowns. We're right on target with opening the middle school, which was the board's first priority. That was in bond issue one, and that is moving straight ahead. And these other projects, we've also talked with Mr. Cheers about these, you know, in his programming, he would delay, you know, maybe a few months, you know, one semester worth. But he didn't see that as a critical problem instructionally.
I just have concern that if we, I just want to make sure that next school year rolls around, we have, we're ready to roll, and we don't have any more disruption to the kids' schedule. So if that means we can, we need to front half the money, I don't want to tap us out, obviously, but, I don't know. I'm comfortable doing something if we need to, in order to make sure we open on time and there's no effect. And we do have a little bit of time cushion in case of weather or something. I don't want to start next year and have another disruption to the kids' schedule.
Well, those are things that we don't have any control over, as you well know. None of us would have guessed a month ago we'd be in this situation we're in now. So we're just trying to play it safe with all of the scenarios, whether it's disaster related or financially. We're just trying to make sure we're doing the right thing and play it safe.
Yeah, Mr. Benton, the one more thing is, you know, if we do this early site work and our bonds don't sell, not only are we into our reserves, but then we don't have money to construct the project anyway. And we've got site work there that's sitting and waiting on the rest of a project. And so as we all talked, we just thought that was, that's a lot of risk with things the way they are.
Okay.
I hear you about not having people disrupted. And contractors, you know, they don't want to disrupt people either. I don't want you to think that I don't understand and I'm not hearing what you're saying. We know that we will need to do the absolute best we can to get these projects going and keep them on a schedule so that they'll be ready for school to start.
Now, I'm just going to ask, is July the only, I mean, unforeseeing any, you know, whatever changes? Could it come to us before July if that, if it turns around? Or would July still be the time?
So the purpose for today, you know, we were really looking for, to be sure that the board agreed with where we're going with the types of, with these projects because they're still working in the background on getting bids and things like that so that these things are ready to rock and roll as soon as the money's here.
Okay. Everything's subject to change at this point.
Are we allowed to ask for the bonds to be, again, to be sold now, early? Is that, can we request the commissioners to try to push the timeline back up to where it should be in order to buy us some time back?
I mentioned that to the finance officer, and she indicated that they're actually going out now to get the revenue bonds for the water treatment facility. And the bond market is not great, that by the time July comes around, we're, it's almost a good thing that ours are coming up in July because it gives the time for the market to get back into shape, yeah. So she's not recommending that, and she didn't indicate that that was even an option. But we can follow up further if you wish for us to. But right now, things are not good in the market, and they're hoping that, they're confident that it will be better in July with the federal infusion of the interventions that the feds are putting into the economy to stabilize things.
Any other discussion?
I make a motion, we accept staff's recommendation and go forward with not putting front money out until the bonds sell.
Mr. Benton has made a motion to go forward, not putting money out, front money out front. So do I have a second?
Just to clarify, sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Cook.
Okay, I'm saying, is this something we actually needed to vote on because it just said it was just for discussion? So is it actually something that needs to be voted on, or is it?
I would like for you guys just to kind of give me the approval.
Okay, that's fine. No, no, that's fine.
So we're all on the same page, yeah.
Okay, any other comments?
Do we have a second? Did we get a second?
Not yet. Oh, Mr. Lemon made a second, okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Benton, a second by Mr. Lemon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is Town Creek Middle School furniture. Town Creek Middle School is still on schedule, and this is the furniture order for the school. This is something that the system is doing outside of the contractor's contract. The reason we're doing that, we like to keep our furniture consistent across the district. We're purchasing this furniture off of a state contract. And we have, the contractor has gone below the required state contract price. So we feel good about the price of the furniture for the school. The total is $464,335.21. And we're asking the board to approve this contract today so the furniture can be ordered.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Lemon has made the motion to approve. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Okay, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I tried a second, it was on mute. Sorry about that.
Okay. Any opposed? So motion carried. Thank you.
The next item is preferred alternates. Norconan General Statute 133-3 allows a system to select preferred alternates, which is desired equipment based on their number of reasons or number of approved reasons why you could do that. And I've listed those below. I don't think I need to go through all those. This is, to summarize it, is keeping our equipment consistent with what's in other buildings. It allows us to stock less repair parts, and it saves us money, they're easier to repair. It's either that or we are talking to software programs that already exist. And so we have to keep consistent on the same communication platform. So I'm asking that these be approved today.
I have one question, Ms. Rutledge.
Yes, ma'am.
Will this affect the quality of materials or longevity of the projects, within the projects?
I think it improves the quality.
Okay.
Yeah, this is equipment that works well. It's not any, it's not any kind of Cadillac either, but it's just tried and true stuff that kind of keeps us consistent.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, Ms. Cook has made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Benton, have second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, board members. The next item is stormwater drainage at West Brunswick and South Brunswick. This is a change order request to Astroturf. In May, we had set aside and you had approved $250,000 for a drainage that may be required as a result of the turf projects. Drainage outside of the track area or the field of clay was required at South Brunswick and West Brunswick. The difference, the increase in the price was due to unsuitable soil. And, well, that's part of it. But the, we put in a pond at South. We had to construct a pond from the field out past the end of the existing practice field. The size of that pond now will accept some additional impervious surface at the school where we have other things that need to be done, some parking, some additional parking along the bus parking side of the school. At West Brunswick, also, we would, were required to upsize the drainage because of our fieldhouse project. So this takes care of all of those. It's a $115 increase over the $250 that you had already authorized. I'm asking approval for this change order today. The funding is available in capital outlay.
Do I have a motion?
No. I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Ms. Cook, motioned. Do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, Mr. Lemon has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you.
The next item is a selection of a mascot for Town Creek Middle School. Dr. DeBerry went through a good process to get input on selection of the mascot and the school colors. And I believe that went to you in a handout. The result of the survey, we looked at Bucks, Coyotes, or Broncos. And Coyotes is the winners.
They're out and about now, too.
They are. Sixty-five percent. I see them on the island. So I'm asking today to approve the Coyote and approve the principal and the superintendent to select final artwork.
Yeah, I really like that bottom left one, the tall print in the shape of Brunswick County.
I just noticed that.
I just, yeah, I like that, too. So we can give them a little, we can give them permission as long as we choose it, right?
That's what it sounds like.
We'll have a survey of the board members.
That's what it sounds like.
Well, both of them are Brunswick County, well, both of them are the county, it's just the difference. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Lemon has made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll let Mr. Benton have it.
Second, and any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, board members. I'd have a lot of, excuse me.
Last but not least, budget amendments. State number seven, there's a variety of things happening, the first line for program 001 and the teacher, classroom teachers is where the state took some funding to true up the NCVPS program. So we initially estimate what of our allotment we plan to expend on that, and then they do a true up about this time of year, every year, with what we actually spent. Moving down, the $36,000 is, the state allocated us with four months of the new principal at Town Creek Middle School. Locally, we funded that from July 1 up until this month, and the state will pick up that salary moving forward. CTE, this, you've seen this before, the CTE program, they take months of employment and convert that to equipment for, to do their replacement cycle and new programming. The summer reading, this is a reversion from last year. The transportation, this is for the stop arm cameras. It says driver salaries, but it in fact is, they give a certain allotment depending on the time of year and how much money they have, they give allotments to schools to reimburse them for stop arm cameras. And then the other transfer is kind of what the state requires to move the money from textbooks to a spendable account, which is just a, an accounting thing. Any questions on state number seven?
Ms. Cahill?
Yes.
This might not be the best way to segue this, but are we having any additional expenses with the virtual and online learning things going on now? Is there any way to even approach or figure that out right now with everybody doing all the online virtual teaching at home? Or is that just going to be something we have to just assess as we go? Not that it makes any difference right now, but I'm just wondering if there's any, going to be any extra, you know, expense or, you know, teachers having to have access to, you know, different things? Or is that just, it's probably too big of a question to even answer right now.
No, actually, good timing for this question because the superintendent received word from the state last night, late, that our portion of this additional money that the state has allocated, our portion is $300,000.
$372,000 out of $50 million, based on ADM.
And we are able to spend that on the feeding program or any kind of online resources like what you just talked about?
like what you just talked about. There's three or four other things tied to this virus situation, so that will be very helpful in recouping our, our costs.
Okay, that, yeah, I had listened to the House Committee Education, I guess, meeting they had last week, and they had talked about that, but I know you've got to really figure out where it goes and how it's established, so that's good to know.
Okay, the next one is capital number 11. The $12 change is, it was a rounding issue that we're trying to correct to be sure that our, our system matches, that our general ledger is correct. And then we're appropriating the insurance settlement for a vehicle that was damaged. And the last one is special revenue, number 10, Medicaid money continues to come in most monthly as we file for that. We've got several donations, we have, for Union Elementary PTO donation for the STEM program of $15,000, various robotics donations, make sure I've got this, for $3,600, the Knights of Columbus for our EC program, $1,100. And then the last item is a reimbursement from the community college where we fund the CTE position 50/50. We pay the employee and then BCC reimburses us their half. That concludes the budget amendments, and if possible, we'd like to get a vote to get those approved today.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendment as stated.
Okay, Mr. Benton has made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Cook has seconded, and any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes the agenda items as listed, there is a notice on the agenda for closed session.
Yes, sir, I will entertain a motion for closed session.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Okay, Mr. Lemon and Ms. Cook. Okay, so, we will enter into closed session, may I suggest a 10-minute break?
That'll be fine.
Should we just hang up and then we'll call back in for that?
That's correct.
Have your call back, call us back, okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.